Yeah.
In the, where, in the first, uh, no, second, whereas Davis County approves the designation of Davis County as
Okay.
A vote center.
Let's, let's bring that up.
Okay, okay, I just want to, before I forgot, cause I'll find, get it.
Good morning, everyone, we welcome to the June meeting of the Davis County Council. At this time, we'll do road call, we have Tony Dunsen.
Here.
And we have Tom Schaefer.
Present.
Darren Holder.
Here.
Mike Sprinkle.
Here.
Marilyn McCullough.
Here.
Mike Myers.
Here.
And I am here as well, uh, pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all. Alright, to get us started, has everybody removed, reviewed the meeting minutes for, uh, May 11th? Any changes? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
So moved by Tony Dunsen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tom Schaefer, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain, cause I wasn't here.
Alright, Mike Sprinkle abstains, motion passes. On the special meeting on 5/27, did everyone have a chance to review those minutes?
I would move to approve.
Alright, Mike Sprinkle, make some motions to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike Myers, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Alright, on the agenda is our, to review our CF1 abatement schedules, we'll start with Apex Enterprises. Sure we've all had a chance to review those, do we have any questions about Apex Enterprises?
Looks okay to me.
I thought it actually looks great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have a motion to approve Apex.
I'll move.
Motion by Mike Sprinkle, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Marilyn McCullough, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Apex is approved unanimously, JBR Reynolds.
ABR.
Yep, this is Jordan Russell. Yeah.
In these uncertain times, I think they look pretty good too, myself.
Is that a motion, Mike?
That'd be a motion.
That'd be a motion by Mike Sprinkle, second.
Second.
Second by Tony Dunsen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? JBR Reynolds is approved. Next one we have is Plant LLC. And we'll do both of these, one's real property, one is personal property. We'll do them together, any questions or comments about Plant? If not, do I have a motion to approve Plant?
I'll move.
Moved by Mike Myers on both of these, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Tom Schaefer, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously to approve Plant. Next one up is Graber Post Buildings. I will abstain from this. Anybody have any questions on Graber Post Buildings?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Tony, do I have a second?
Second.
We had a three-way tie there. Alright, Mike Myers with a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Alright, Graber Post passes unanimously. Next one up is McAllister Machinery Company.
Is that the one where they weren't quite making the what they had projected?
That was, yeah, they did that last year, I think they pivoted to do-
I think it was, I think it was a little better than it was.
Yeah, they pivoted their business, I know, they were doing like a repair on, like, um, trash trucks and things like that, you see them lined up, so they've kind of pivoted their business a little bit for the, the long time.
I'll move that, I think there's three of those, I just-
There was three of those, yeah.
I'll move that we approved the, for all three of those.
Alright, motion by, uh, Tom to approve all three for McAllister.
Second.
Second by Mike Sprinkle, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion passes unanimously. Next one up is Maysville Enterprises, Maysville Properties LLC, formerly Maysville Enterprises. Any comments or questions?
Move to approve.
Alright, I have a motion to approve by Tom Schaefer, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, alright, second by Tony Dunsen, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Maysville Properties LLC passes unanimously. Alright, then we have this is the Westgate 7, this is the one sold, correct?
Right, and we did, we have not received their forms, so the new owner was contacted.
Okay.
And the new forms, or the blank forms were sent and a copy of last year's, so that's, on the one property, there's only one uh, year left of the abatement schedule.
Mm-hmm.
So, is that the Bush properties?
Yes.
Yeah, so it was sold, um, and the new owner then is eligible for that last year of that abatement, so that's underway.
Is this something that we would hold off on?
We just have to table that one, and, uh, cause you can't make a ruling on it, we don't have the complacency paperwork.
I do have a motion to table this one.
I'll move.
So moved by Tom Schaefer, second.
Second.
Second by Marilyn McCullough, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one is One Way Technologies. Any questions or comments?
Looks good to me, I'd move to approve.
Alright, motion by Mike Myers to approve, second by Tony Dunsen, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously to approve One Way Technologies. And that concludes our abatements. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is the Town of Montgomery Sewer Project. This project formally came to, uh, us, or the ARPA Committee at one time for, they were looking for a, a $500 mat, or grant, or $500, $500,000 allotment of our ARPA funds to help them with their sewer project. They had a, a grant that they were working on, it did not come through, um, so they've come back to us for, um, they're working on this project, again, they need design fees completed, uh, they're requesting $250,000 for, to help them with the divide, the design fees to cover, so this would be $250,000 instead of the $500, and this would be, this is all we would do with this project at this point, so, um, but again, this comes back and, as our ARPA, now, how we've done that into our general fund, this will, this would be, come out of that.
Out of that, or edit?
Well, however we want to choose to do so.
And the town spent a hundred grand in.
And Mike is here to answer any questions about the project.
So you say we're just, we're, they're just asking us for $250 at this point?
At this point, we'll do $250,000. We would be out of that project.
How soon do you think you'd be able to apply for that grant?
Hey Mike, can you come up to the, yeah, thank you.
Mike Haley, I'm the President of Town Board of Montgomery, uh, we'll see, where were we?
We're, we're gonna complete the design fees.
Timeframes.
Yes, yes, this, this gets engineering complete, it's a $400,000 bill to get it done, this allows us to be shovel-ready, uh, we're, main thing we'll be working with is USDA rule development. Think we, we can follow, the way we'll do is much as 55% grant, the rest will be loaned, depending on how, how it falls, the scoring or whatever, we're gonna have to borrow a million, two fifty, up to twice that. Two million, five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and hopefully, well, this will move pretty quick, I mean, they're talking about this project being, at least in construction next year, so, we're under a, a, an agreed order with IDAM right now, on our sewer, sewer system, and we're not allowed to expand it in any way, shape, or form, so, there, there is some interest in housing up in that area, just informally, but we're not able to take on any, like a subdivision or anything that's outside of our, the, uh, footprint of our sewer system right now, so. It's an economic development thing.
Can you, can you go over that one more time, the total amount you need and where your sources are right now?
Okay, we need $400,000 to get this engineering done, uh, the town's gonna put, has a hundred thousand to put into it, the Economic Development Foundation's, will put up 50,000 for us in the county for, for the 250.
And to say that IDAM's breathing, breathing down your neck would be an understatement?
Right, I mean, they're working with us, don't get me wrong, but, you know, they're, they're, they're keeping the whip going, so, yeah.
I move we go ahead and approve the request for the Town of Montgomery of $250,000. From where?
Do we, we, go ahead.
And where do you think we should take it from?
Well.
We don't have that money move, we're not moving that money till next, next year, right now.
Yeah, the Auditor's Office requests that where the money is to come from is stated publicly so that we'll know. Um, so as far as currently, we have received the first portion of that ARPA money, we've requested the second portion, and I've been expecting it before now, um, but I've checked with other counties and no one has received it yet, but we should be receiving that second portion anytime.
And what fund will that go in?
Um, it will go into the ARPA fund, all of those ARPA dollars will go into the ARPA fund. But those are, the plan for that, as you know, was suspended for-
salaries.
Right, so, you will need to name, you know, if you're gonna pay this out of a particular fund in County General, or if you're gonna pay from it, from Edit or Rainy Day, whatever your source, will need to be named.
I know, when, we have some in Edit, we can take out of a couple different funds, Edit would be a good use of that.
My thinking, it is economic development, first of all, I second that motion, that's what we should do.
Alright, so-
But then we, and then, but we need to figure out where it's coming from, all that money's going into General, but obviously, going into planning, General Fund's gonna take a massive hit this year, so, I would say, take some from Edit and some from General, just to keep the piggy, piggy bank a little more money in it, but it's however anybody wants to do it.
I'd be perfectly fine taking it all from Edit, leave the General alone because Patty's got a comment.
Well, just a slight comment, so Edit, while council appropriates the money, Edit is, um, committed by commissioners. Am I correct? I, I know it's just a technicality, but I just want to make sure.
Well, and I know in their last session, they approved that, right, that they would go along with it based on where we recommended it came from.
I just wanted to make sure that there's good communication.
In their last meeting, they, they approved that, so.
Yeah, I have no problem all of it from Edit.
I, that's, would be my preference.
So I have a motion by Tony Dunsen, uh, for the $250,000 to come from Edit, no, it was, it was Tom Schaefer, second, by Tony Dunsen, $250,000 out of Edit.
For the Town of Montgomery.
For the Town of Montgomery.
For the water, sewer, water, sewer project.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously.
Third time here, so this, this is a charm.
I hope so, appreciate it very much, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Alright, additional appropriation, oh no, I am sorry, vote center, I am sorry, Janice. Vote center plan for Davis County.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to give a small introduction about the vote centers, we've talked about this before, where we wanted to go to vote centers eventually, and since we were able to get the e-poll pads that we used in the election, which went really well, everyone really liked that, and it was much easier, I think, for the poll workers as well, because having been a poll worker, I know how hard it is to try and keep your things working right, and we used to have to count the poll pads, like, or the poll books, we would have to count how many voters to make sure our voting machines and the books balanced, and people would come in as you're counting, and so the e-poll books were wonderful, um, we had a lot of good, um, compliments on those, um-
I want to say, you gave me a tour of how all that worked, and it was, and it was really impressive, and I think it worked really well, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I mean, it does look really good.
Um, but yes, everyone really liked those, but in order to have the vote centers, we had to have those poll books, so, um, anyway, um, the election board, I'm part of the election board, cause I'm the secretary on that, and then Martha, Martha Newton and Becky Guthrie are on that with me as well. And we have, um, we had a meeting back in March, and we were in favor of going to vote centers, because we have to have a unanimous vote to do that, so when we did that, Lauren had actually worked on the vote centers like a while back, but we didn't have the poll books yet, and it was a huge cost, so, um, now that we have them, whenever we did, you know, voted for it again, to go ahead and go forward with that, um, I asked Lauren to work on getting that again, because she'd already, you know, worked on it quite a bit before, so, um, I'm gonna let her tell you about that, she's worked on it and, um, worked on those resolutions that, um, we have to have as well, so, um, anyway, that is our hope that we can go to vote centers, it's, I think it would be a great benefit for the county, and, um, it's, I think I've told this before, the vote centers, um, would have all the ballots on the machines, and so, if you were working in Crane, I always use this as an example, but if you were working in Crane but lived in Washington, um, if you didn't get off work until like 5:30, and you could get to Odin in time, you could just go to the Odin Vote Center, and then you could vote there and not have to, you know, hurry back to Washington, cause more than likely, you couldn't make it by 6:00 PM, so, and it would work the same anywhere, any, any voter could go to whatever precinct. So, if you guys don't have any questions for me, then I'm gonna let Lauren kind of explain, yes.
Would that reduce the polling centers?
Yes.
It would?
Yeah, we're hoping to go down to like seven, isn't that what you, eight?
Eight, and we have how many now?
We have, well, we have 28 precincts, but 20, I think 17 locations.
17 locations.
17, so you go from 17 to eight?
Yeah.
And I can explain that a little more.
Okay.
Yeah, great.
So, do you guys, if you have a question or anything, I mean, I-
Thank you, one, one question, maybe more for you, and I think I know the answer, but I just want to get this after publicly, cause I get a lot of questions about this, currently, in our voting locations, excuse me, what the fuck am I throwing? The voting machines, where you actually vote, they are not connected to the internet, correct?
No, they are not.
And if we go to vote centers, it'll be the same case, they will not be connected to the internet.
No, they won't.
Okay, I just, I get a lot of questions about that, a lot of people think they are, and I just want you to say that publicly in the minutes, that they're not.
Yes, the voting machines are not.
A lot of people think they are, yeah, okay.
Go ahead and let Lauren talk, and if you guys have other questions for me, uh-
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, speaking of what you talked about, the, the e-poll pads are all connected electronically, that's where we check people in. Anyone that works on the e-poll pads, like the poll workers, they cannot edit anything in there, so don't worry about that, all they can do is just pull up the voter and say that they voted. They can't get in and change anything, or anything like that, so, and the, and they're totally separate from the voting machines, which are not connected to the internet, so. So I think you probably all know what vote centers are, but if you don't, I'll kind of give you an overview, right now, you have to go to your precinct to vote, and if you move, for instance, and you assume that it got moved with you, but you didn't come in, you might go to the new precinct and find out, oh no, I have to go back to the other one, or vice versa, so it's kind of been an issue, we, and on Election Day, we get tons and tons of calls of people, someone's here to vote, and they're not here, where are they supposed to go? So the e-poll pads kind of take care of all that, with vote centers, they can go anywhere to vote, so again, that's another thing that's not gonna be an issue, because if they go to the wrong location, it doesn't matter, cause they're all vote centers, they're all gonna be the same. Um, as far as the, the number of vote centers, right now, we're going, looking at eight, um, I can tell you where those are in just a minute, um, but the idea is, they can vote early still, they can vote by mail, um, early voting will be on the Saturdays at the locations, not just at the courthouse. So they might be able to vote on the Saturday in Odin, for instance, to get some of those voters out early, and some of the locations will have up to 10 voting machines, where they don't have as many now, so, they'll have more workers to get them through quicker, and more machines to let them vote quicker. So just some, I, some background on vote centers, um, right now, 52 out of the 92, or, excuse me, 59 out of the 92 counties are doing vote centers, so over half of the states doing it. Um, the public is aware of it, because we have a lot of phone calls saying, can we vote anywhere, or people that move here assume they can vote anywhere, so a lot of the, the public knows about it. Um, places like Vigo County has done it for a long time, and they actually, which obviously we can't do, but they have on their, um, news, on the bottom, a little line going across that says, which locations are less busy, so, people that watch Channel 10, for instance, will see that, they know that it's out there. So it's not really a new thing, it's just getting it here, um, originally, Tippecanoe and Wayne Counties were the first ones to pilot the program in 2006, and if you're interested in that, you can go online and see what they went through to get it to this point. Um, in 2011, the Indiana General Assembly passed Senate Enrolled Act 32, and House enrolled Act 1242, and the governor signed both pieces of legislation, making vote centers an option for Indiana, any Indiana county, that was in 2011, so we're, we've come a long way since then. So basically, the, the process to get a vote center county is, like Janice said, the, the, um, election board had to vote, which they have done unanimously. The next step is to have a resolution signed by the council and the commissioners, um, and then after that, we have to form a committee. And on that committee, um, we have the election board, which is the clerk and the two appointed people, the county chairs, a veteran poll worker who has worked a lot of elections, so they can see that side of it, um, the computer techs, one of our IT guys that we've had working for a long time, that knows all about the machines, um, one council person and one commissioner, so when we get to that point, that committee will meet, um, I have the whole plan done, that I think will work, but I'll present that to the committee, um, any suggestions that they have, of course, we'll look at, we may make changes at that point, so after that committee meets, which is a public meeting, and it'll be notified, you know, posted that way, um, then we have 30 days to wait to see if there are any comments, any suggestions, if there are, we'll work on that. If there aren't, then at that point, which is gonna be approved, and then the election board will have to sign off on it to make it go into effect. Um, you had asked about locations, um, this may change, obviously, but the ones that we're looking at right now are Offordsville and Bethel South for the south part of the county, the Conservation Club for the southern part of, um, Washington, um, the Washington Park, the courthouse, the Odin Park, Plainville Fire Station, which may be moved to, um, a church in Plainville, I've talked to them, and they said it's fine to do that, it's a bigger facility with better parking, it's a possibility, it's not set in stone yet, and then also, the Ruatan Building for the east side, so there is one throughout, um, I did look at the distance between the locations, and no one will have to drive more than eight and a half miles to get to a polling place if they're going from their home, so it's, it's convenient for everyone, and I looked at population of the areas too, assuming they will vote where they are, and that's how I decided, like, how many machines will go at each location. Like, the park will have 10 machines, um, and it, we may change this, we may have to edit this, if it gets crazy busy, we may end up doing 12 machines out there, we'll just have to see how it goes. Um, but talking to other counties, I feel like this is a pretty good plan, um-
Would there be one in Elnora?
There would be one in Elnora for the municipal election, but for the, the general, no. Because they don't have to drive that far to get to, I mean, it will cha, it may change, like I said, depending on the committee's recommendations, it may change, but to get to eight, I don't have one else, cause they can go to Plainville, or they can go to Odin, which are both really close, I mean, it's five minutes from Elnora to- And I did talk to Becky Guthrie, who is the Ride Solutions President, and she said that they do offer, which they have before, and I was unaware, they do offer free rides to anyone in the county to go to vote on Election Day and take them back, so if there is, is any kind of an issue with something like that, they can get a free ride.
And there wouldn't be one in, um, Bogart or Bamburin area?
There, there's a really low turnout there, and then again, they could go to Plainville, or they could go to Odin, or they can go to the Ruatan, I mean, it's, it's within eight miles of there. And, and it may change, like I said, with the committee, but where I'm at right now, I don't feel that that's probably a location that has enough turnout that they need their own.
Bogart would actually be closer, because, um, they moved the one out of Corso several years ago, up to the Simon J. Graber Center, well, that's a bit of a drive, but like, my dad's house is, you know, he could go on to Plainville a lot easier, so now he can go to Plainville and vote, stay on the drag all the way up there.
Yeah.
Not if he were alive.
Sounds like there's some process improvements, uh, do you look to actually save some money doing this?
We are gonna save money, um, I've been looking at about 6,000 each general and primary election savings to the county, and about 3,000 in each municipal, which obviously is not really a savings to the county, because we get that money back, but it's a savings overall, definitely for the city of Washington.
Very helpful getting poll workers and everything too.
It's gonna help a lot, we're gonna go from 110 poll workers down to 51.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Great.
Then hopefully, like I say, because you're not gonna be using as many, but you'll have some people out there with experience, maybe, that you can have for a backup, I know that's always a problem.
We can pick the best, because we have a lot of poll workers that, I wouldn't say are bad by any means, but, when you get to the end, you get kind of desperate, and you have to pick people that have never worked before, and you train them, you're thinking, well, I think they're gonna be okay, but this way, we'll have less, and we can pick the ones that we know are gonna be outstanding, which is what it should be.
When are you looking at this for, next year with the city election?
Yes, correct, yeah, we can't change this year, because we're mid, so anything you do in the primary, you have to do in the general, so it won't take effect until next year.
Yeah, I didn't know if you were looking at next year.
But there's a lot of process between now and then that we have to do, and if the committee gets a lot of suggestions, I wanted plenty of time to, to work on those. And then we'll be getting ready for the general election and all that too, so we'll get busy as it gets later. Any questions?
Sounds great.
Something like about that.
Sounds great.
Okay, so, do you have the copy of the resolution, I also have a copy here.
Yes.
We do.
Okay.
Um, I can read the resolution, and then we can-
Let's do that.
So, a resolution approving the designation of Davis County as a vote center county, whereas Indiana Code 31118 dot period, dot one allows counties to adopt the vote center model and, whereas the County Council of Davis County approves the designation of Davis County as a vote center county, and, whereas the County Election Board has the responsibility for properly drafting a vote center plan for Davis County, which will take effect upon unanimous vote of the County Election Board, and having the plan properly filed with Indiana Election Department. Be it so resolved by the County Council of Davis County, that Davis County is approved to operate as a vote center county, upon the required approval and filing of the County Vote Center Plan. County Council of Davis County, and we'll sign that, so-
And I would move to approve this.
Alright, I have a motion by Mike Sprinkle to approve this, second by Mike Myers, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, and we'll keep you informed as it gets closer.
Thanks.
Both of you for your work on this.
Yes, Patty.
Lauren, will it be beneficial to have the council go ahead and appoint a member for that committee that you will need, so that while it's fresh on the mind?
We're not to that point yet, if they would like to, certainly, um, if not, we figured we'd be contacting Matt a little bit later and, and get his suggestion, whatever you feel is appropriate.
We'll just wait at this point, and we'll, we'll do it, and then when you're ready for that, and then we'll have that discussion, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sounds great.
Appreciate your work on that.
Yes, thanks a lot for all your work on it.
Alright, now to the appropriations, uh, County General Superior Court report, we have, um, debit jurors to pay the jurors on jury duty, we can do these together, and then court expert fees, the requesting- court expert fees, they're requesting fifteen thousand dollars total.
I don't, I don't know why there's such a difference there. I mean, in the past, we've only had like a thousand dollars in that line, budget line item in, uh, nineteen and twenty both. Um, and we, I don't know, we ended up in twenty-one.
Right.
It seems like a big stretch on that.
Mike?
Are they out of money that was appropriated in those lines?
Good question, do we know?
I did, I, I checked that last night, um.
Are they Tom?
No, so we were looking at those line items where they have the petted juror fees and the expert fees, are they out of that, those line items at this point, their budget?
Uh, they're
Okay.
Good check.
Did you look it up?
I, I did, um, I'm trying to
Tom?
In the expert fees, we had budgeted five thousand, they've moved three thousand to, I think it was, I can't remember where they moved it to. So there's only two thousand remaining in the expert fees, which is the other one he's requesting. And, um, I think, I think there is some money left in the petted jurors, but there was only a thousand dollars to start, to start with in there. He had originally budgeted that a thousand and there was, there was some money left, but not very much.
So definitely by September, we want, we definitely more dialogue about how they're projecting that.
And where they're moving it.
Yeah.
Some of that's based on how many jury trials they have and I think they have had a few this, this year or so and in the past with COVID, they were not having them, so that would be part of the reason for the difference in the amount of money in those lines.
Oh, it has it on here.
I mean, do we I mean, there's no one representing the courts here today, is this something you want to wait on for more explanation or?
Do we even have that option? Have they already spent it?
Have they already spent it?
They have, uh, let's see. They have spent thirty-six thirty so far in that petted juror account, but they moved three thousand dollars from the expert witness money down into there. So right now there's only three hundred and thirty-nine dollars in there.
I do believe that they have had recently had some jury trials, so it may be a necessity that they're needing that to complete some obligations.
I, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion, we approve, actually approve both of those, the, uh, ten thousand dollars for the petted jurors and, uh, five thousand dollars for the expert witnesses and we can reevaluate it at budget time when, when it comes in.
Probably note that we would like someone here to be able to explain that in the future, so, you know, with their process. But, you know, it would be nice if they were available. But we'll, we'll make a motion.
Those wells where the other money was moved to.
Right. It, it's, it's very hard to, to approve things like that when they're, they, they don't have representation here. I mean, I know the judges are busy, but they could have someone explain it. Alright, well, I'll take, um, Tom's motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mike Myers, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Alright, motion passes unanimously. Alright, Community Corrections Project Income. Good morning.
Do you have any questions? Did you guys see the appropriations Diana sent, the requests?
I, I have reviewed it. Um, basically it looks like where we reduced the budget last year, all the money's being, trying to be put back in there, so I, I would like an explanation on that.
Um, that was what was approved by the DOC and the board. Um, so all this money is coming from project user fees, it's not coming from county.
Where's it coming from again?
Project user fees, so the money that's getting paid in from our clients. That fund, it's not coming from any county fund, I believe, is that right Patty? There's, it's not even coming from county money, so.
So who?
We're asking for it to be put back. I think it was, all these were cut in half, I think.
No, not, no, it wasn't half.
Or some of them were, I think.
Um, so who has budget oversight for your budget then?
Uh, the advisory board and the DOC.
And
Department of Corrections.
And when do you do your budget versus when we approved our, your budget?
I believe it was the same ti, it was at the same time, it was in twenty, was this the one that was submitted last year?
Yes.
Tom, one of the challenges that they have in budgeting is, uh, they budget with the DOC from July. They run on the state calendar, which makes it challenging for us to keep it in correlation with our budget, so it is a challenge because a lot of times we're dealing with six months, um, of data and it makes it a little bit hard to compare apples to apples sometimes.
I agree Patty. So we can't spend more. Being grant, we can't spend more than what the grant is.
Well, this is not grant money, this is user fee money.
User fees.
So again, again with any, um, financial aspect in the county, um, we should not spend more than what's in the balance. So that should be monitored by the director.
And some of those accounts, they, they haven't really spent any money. I mean, one of them I think is eighty, eighty dollars for a program supply. That was cut in half.
And that's the one where I, I get a lot of my, um, MRT books, class books, my classes and, um, things like that, but I I don't, I really can't answer the other questions because I don't have the, um, balances in front of me. Diana wasn't here, so she told me to come today, so. But the vehicle supplies, I think, you know, for gas and stuff, that's going up, so I think that's why she wanted.
Tom, I guess just to clarify, that, they can't spend what they don't collect, what they don't have, so even with an appropriation, if there's not cash there to expand, then they can't expand it.
Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion? Would you like to request more information?
Yeah, I, I believe I would like to. I appreciate your explanation there Patty, but I mean, maybe we ought to have Diane come and, um, give us a little more information.
What specifically do you want information on and I can get that for you? This was the budget that was, I guess, already approved by the DOC and the board. And so I don't think it's ever been changed before by the county is what Diana had told me, that it's never really been changed, so.
Yeah, so what's the ramifications of that when we do change it?
This, we're asking for it to be put back, I guess.
If, I guess if you haven't spent the money for a period of three years, the pattern is not spending it, why should we budget it? That, that, I mean, I guess that's my question. I mean, one, only one of these accounts, they have had really any, uh, the drug and alcohol testing is the only one that's had
That's a big one.
Activity.
Yeah, and that's a big one. The vehicle one, we're using the vehicle a lot more because our field officer goes out, like, a lot. He, he works several hours a week. Um, program supplies, that's again for my classes and office supplies, that's just for general office supplies, so.
They, they have said, you have spent money in the vehicle fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, those, those two, the vehicle and the, uh, drug and alcohol testing. I actually had, they've used all their funds in the vehicle one already. They've had to move money for it. I guess I would just like to have a bigger, bigger understanding of either we don't need to waste our time reviewing their budget.
Which we do. We spend time.
We did, yeah. Or, so maybe, maybe from, uh, from our standpoint, we could get this approved and then I, I think when their representative comes to the, uh, budget hearing part that we're doing, then maybe we can get more, a little more information.
Well, and I think we will. Um, it's going to be a more extensive process this year and we have more time allotted for that, so definitely we'll want to dig in.
But from what Patty's saying, though, it'll already be approved before we even see it?
Well, the DOC is their governing, um,
Their governing body.
Entity that, um, oversees and for their programs. So the user fees, uh, according to the DOC, they have to have that budget approved by the DOC for their whole programs to work, correct?
Correct.
Laura?
Correct.
So, um, it gets a little bit confusing with community corrections because we're dealing with, in my terminology, different buckets of money.
Yeah.
But it's still all overseen by the Department of Corrections and they can't operate without the Department of Corrections oversight. But you, and the responsibility is a partnership with that, that you have to appropriate, that's the spending approval process. So the user fees, again, they can't spend what they do not have. But your question, I think, goes more to of how they're allocating their fees and what their, what their plan, overall plan is, is what I'm understanding. Is that correct, Tom?
That's correct.
Okay, so I understand what you're doing.
I'll make the motion that we go ahead and pay these, pay this ninety-two hundred dollars from that. But I think all of us would like for Diana to come to the next meeting because there's just a lot of unanswered questions when it comes to community corrections.
Yeah.
There's, maybe we need to be taught a little bit on a few things, educated on some things.
Educated a little.
Absolutely. She'd be happy to do that, too.
You know, there's just, we just have questions. I have questions, I can't speak for anybody else.
And like when, before she left her vacation, she just said finish the financial report. So I mean, maybe she can show you that and explain the financial reporting that she has to do the DOC, so you guys can see that part of it too.
It'd be good.
So, it's pretty extensive.
Where and why some of it's spent, I think would be helpful too.
Where and why?
Where and why?
Okay.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Alright, I have a motion by Tony Dunsen to approve this. Uh, based on Diane coming and explaining a lot of this, I have a second by Tom Schaefer. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks Lauren, appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll have her, uh.
That's good, thank you very much. Alright, the next one is voter safety grant. Good morning, sir, how are you?
Alright, how are you all this morning?
Been good.
Good. Uh, this is the voter safety grant, it's paid by the Indiana Department of Natural Resources, it's for us to patrol bogs. Uh, like Jamison often says, we're in the, he's in the sunshine and blue sky business and that is as well, so if it's raining Saturday and Sunday, the guys don't make it up there. But, uh, we use that to, uh, patrol Boggs Lake on weekends and holidays. Just, it's an overtime venture for the guys.
This is reimbursable, right?
Right.
It's, yeah.
D N R. D N R.
Grant money.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's grant money, it's a grant. Uh, we pay for the fuel and the boat and wages. It used to be ten thousand, I think at one time it was fifty, but they've whittled it down a little bit all the time, but I think there's, yeah, I know Carroll County has a voter grant now, so.
So it'll, it'll show negative for a month until he puts the claim and get that number.
We'll get reimbursed.
And it won't exceed the amount of the grant, the, the billing?
No.
Would move to approve this.
I have a motion by Mike Sprinkle to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tony Dunsen, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, in your packet, you have, um, some southeast Washington, southwest Washington, I sixty-nine allocation areas. The Davies Martin Joint County Parks and Regulation Board meeting and the Board of Aviation Commissioners meeting in minutes. Also, of course, your fund balances and that sort of thing. Is there anything additional from anybody in the public, have any questions or comments for the council? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
So move by Tom, second by Mike Sprinkle, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thanks everyone, appreciate it. We have a lot to sign, so please stick around.
Hey Lauren. Hey Lauren, Janice, Lauren, Lauren, Janice. That was a bit long. Patty, are we off?